Welcome back to the Governing Board's open session. Let's call to order the meeting on ten twenty-six at six oh six P M. Let's go to three point two, our Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Jenkins, are you in the room? Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when the flag is on the screen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move on to three point three on our agenda. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Here.
Student trustee Cooper?
Here.
Trustee Whitro?
Here.
Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee Handy?
Here.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Here.
Trustee Bonia? Trustee Bonia, are you here?
You might have had the wrong link. My link didn't let me in as a participant. It had me as in a, as a viewer. So that might be where it is, not sure.
Okay, I'll come back. Oh, there she is. Let me move her over. There we go. Okay. Trustee Gonzalez U N?
I'm right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes, here.
Okay. Trustee Bonia, did you make it over?
Here I am.
Great. Okay. We're all set.
Welcome, trustee Bonia. Okay. Thank you. Three point four, the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. Can we post that on the screen as well? Thank you. As usual, I'll start off our meeting by reading the affirmation of the statement of cooperation, which prepares the framework and tenor of our meeting tonight. Number one, the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students. Number three, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols. When we seek additional information, members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to Board Policy two, three, four, zero for adding items to the agenda. Number four, we have reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informality to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect members if they stray away from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to board policy. Number eight, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. And number nine, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Let's move on to three point five, report of action taken in closed session. Vice President Gonzalez U N, is there a report out from closed session?
Madam President, we have no actions that were, are reportable from closed session.
Thank you. Three point six, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion in a second?
Over.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez U N, and second from trustee Whitro. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yeah.
Trustee Gonzalez U N?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Three point seven, approval of the minutes. Motion?
From whom?
Thank you, trustee Whitro. Second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, Vice President Gonzalez U N. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now let's move on to three point eight, my favorite part, Associated Students Government Reports. Do we have any student leaders in the room?
We have one and I'll move them over. Harry Mapadell?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
Hello, everyone. And so, yeah, this is my report. Last week Friday, A S P C officers met with Vice President, Vice Chancellor, Sarah Brown to discuss bringing back the A C Transit EZ Pass. And the A S P C will decide in our meeting this Thursday at twelve twenty P M if the A C Transit referendum should be brought back in the spring twenty twenty-two ballot. And last, in our last meeting, the A S P C appointed two officers for the participatory governance. We have an additional student representative in the Presidential Task Force and one in the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, or S S C C. And lastly, we had the Return to Campus Student Town Hall on October fifteenth. It was a humongous success. There is an attendance of over forty students and administration of B C C answered many of the questions that, and concerns that students had. And thank you to all the faculty for answering the questions and also thank you to the B C C Student Activities Department for organizing and even advertising the event and making it the success it was. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Student trustee Cooper?
Hello. Um, for my report as A S M C president, I have two matters that, I had three matters I wanted to bring to your attention, but one of them was just, just mentioned. We all got to meet about the EZ Pass and A S M C will also be addressing that topic on Friday. Aside from that, we have been reviewing and revising all of our procedures and getting them up into better accordance with Brown Act and really just polishing that stone with the help of our new parliamentarians. And that has been occupying a lot of our time and focus this past week. It's been an exciting matter. Additionally, as the A S M C president, I have been having a great deal of difficulty engaging the participatory governance process due to a number of Brown Act violations and nine plus one obstructions. And in my efforts to cite and report these, as well as warn of the legal avenues that I would have, have no other recourse but to take, have started to experience severe retaliation, including student conduct violations, which I keep defeating but, but keep popping back up. So I'm, I'm calling on the community to help intervene in these matters. Thank you all so much for your time.
Okay. And let us, do we have any more student leaders in the room? Maisha or Saka?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the next agenda item then. Pearl to Classified Senate Report, three point nine.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
We sure can, Terrence.
Okay. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight we have four classified Senate Campus Reports. The first report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. Berkeley City College held a Flex Day workshop Wednesday, October twentieth, titled Get to Know Your B C C Community. This was an interactive workshop where classifieds were presented with personal and professional details that had to be guessed by all participants. This was an entertaining yet informative activity for classifieds to learn about and create dialogue to forge deeper connections with the B C C community as a whole. Next, the Senate leadership has shared with the larger classified body the request of changing the Roundtable Committee to a tri-chair model to include a classified professional as a third chair. This will be voted on at the next Senate meeting. And the next Classified Senate Meeting will be held on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, at three P M. The second report comes from the College of Alameda Classified Senate. The College of Alameda Classified Senate elected new fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three classified leaders. Classified President is Louis Martyris E. McFarland. Vice President is Kiwanah Rollins. Secretary is Sean Foster. Treasurer is Selwyn Montgomery. Classified Senators are Wendy O'Dath, Anna O'Neill, LaShawn Brumfeld, Siobhan Herbert, and Muriel Montague. The College of Alameda Classified Senate would like to make known the following actions and considerations. Midsemester flex. The College of Alameda's Classified Senate met with over twenty-plus Zoom classified participants. We are building short and long-term goals for academic year two thousand twenty-two during our November retreat of new classified leaders. Two, abide to contract requirements to provide, one, classified vacancy list and, two, seniority listings at the College of Alameda to the Classified Senate quarterly. Three, the Classified Senate supports the budget allocation model from the District Plant, Planning Budget Committee, which includes a recommendation to fill classified vacancies within two payroll periods. And lastly, provide the College of Alameda Budget Committee Fiscal Year two thousand one twenty-two quarterly budget projections for this fiscal year plus report to the College of Alameda Community Quarterly. Moving on to the third report, which comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Laney College Classified Senate compiled questions from the Laney Town Hall Q and A. The questions and concerns were submitted to the administration and the expected response should be within fourteen days. The next Senate meeting will take place Thursday, October twenty-eighth, at three P M. Meeting information is located at the Laney College Board Docs. And lastly, the Laney Senate would like to share the following information with all senators. Classified Leadership Institute, the Classified Leadership Institute, will have a conference June eighth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-two, in Riverside, California. This is a great opportunity to collaborate with classified professionals from community colleges across California. The Senate will update the Laney College Classified Senate webpage with the information for the conference. Registration opens January third, two thousand twenty-two. And now the fourth and last report comes from the Merritt College Classified Senate. Merritt classifieds have, Merritt College classifieds have expressed a high level of concern regarding return to work as there has been much confusion regarding the notifications that were sent out to return to work and then the retracting of those notices. We ask that you take into consideration before any further notices are sent the adjustments that would be required to enable classifieds to return to work smoothly, particularly those with families that have had to adjust due to the impact of COVID nineteen and will need the two weeks as indicated to prepare their families for this adjustment as they prepare to return to work. Many of our classifieds are parents, such as myself, that have had to adjust to accommodate their children's school schedules and more due to COVID. Therefore, it is important to us that we receive notices that are indefinite and in a timely manner. In support of S C I U Local Ten to One and their endeavors to negotiate our safe return to work, we, the Senate, stand with S C I U and request that any negotiations with S C I U for our safe return to work be fully agreed upon by both the union and the district before any further return to work notices are sent out. We understand the responsibility of fulfilling our duties, supporting students along their educational path and our institutions as we strive forward, but not at the expense of risking our health and the health of the students we serve. Returning to work prematurely without a firm and strategic agreement between the district and S C I U places classifieds and the students. We serve at risk and increases health concerns also, such as the risk of an outbreak if plausible measures are not in place. On a good note, I would like to take the time to thank President Johnson and Merritt's administrative team for working together to gradually improve conditions at Merritt College and preparation for our return to work. Though we know that this is not an overnight process, their efforts have not gone unnoticed. We are aware that directives are given from the top down and not the bottom up. And so even Merritt's administration has someone to answer for. I'm sorry, to answer to. Therefore, we are going to the top with an understanding that there is no perfect plan, but as a district and Board of Trustees, you also have the responsibility of service to produce and execute with good intentions the best plan possible for the good of all. Therefore, in full support of S C I U Local Ten to One, we request that a full agreement is reached before any further return to work actions are initiated. That is the end of the Campus Reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Let's move on to three point ten, District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, President Bellarys, members of the trustees and Chancellor Jackson and all of the rest of the people and the students and the faculty and the classified professionals. As we embark on this time, and I hope that everybody survived the rain. I know that Chancellor Jackson has her own issues over there in Texas, but for those of us here, it was a very wet couple of days. And so I hope there was nobody's car that was in one of those areas that got overwhelmed with flooding. This upcoming week, members of our Academic Senate will be attending the statewide plenary for, for Academic Senators. And this is a really cherished time because this allows our senators and other faculty who are attending to really see what's going on throughout California and in particular, what kinds of issues are coming up to the fore in terms of in Sacramento. The most notable one coming up again this year, but with more impetus behind it is the ethnic studies requirement for community colleges. And so as we move more and more into looking at issues of equity, these things continue to churn out. Another one that is coming up is this concept in terms of instructional, about high flex. You'll start to see this more and more whereby the classroom allows for faculty to engage at the same time with the same material with their students that are face-to-face, that may be on Zoom for other reasons and not being able to be in attendance at the, in classroom. And then for any others who might elect to see the recording afterwards, utilizing these different modules. That's also becoming something that is being moved through the State Senate in terms of resolutions. And so it's going to be a very interesting time to go and see what are the, where, where are the issues and what are the issues? So finally, we want to acknowledge that last week during our Flex Day, there was a continued information and engagement with faculty. Because of the new new, we all have to look at and see what is it going to take for us as we move back to face-to-face as we do this in the pandemic? And we look forward to having more of us back to work next semester. We are cautiously optimistic that the topsy-turvyness of the return to campus will get smoothed out before January when we all are back or a good number of us are back at, on the campus. So we look forward to getting through November and, and December and the final weeks of our semester. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald. Let's move on to three point eleven, Public Communication. Vice President Gonzalez U N? I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I am told that we are no longer collecting, having people register in advance to communicate whether they want to do public comment. So I don't know who that is, who now has that list, or how many people it is that we have. So I'm going to hand this over tonight to Maisha Jameson to just handle. And then we can have a discussion to figure out how to move that forward, coming forward. But right now I have no information and I have no control over who, who's let, who gets in. So I think it's easier for staff to just handle it tonight.
That'll work.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. No problem. If there are any attendees that would like to speak at public comment, please raise your hand. I will move over Jennifer Shinowski now.
I'd just like to thank the board for that update and improvement in accordance with Brown Act. That's great. Great news.
Okay, we have Jennifer Shinowski and Lynn Williams and Nancy Kaden.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Maisha. Good evening, everyone. I, I realize it's been a while since I introduced myself and I was at an administrative retreat last week and saw a lot of new faces. So I want to start by actually introducing myself. My name is Jennifer Shinowski. I'm the President of the Peralta Federation of Teachers. We're the union that represents all faculty at the four colleges. We represent both full and part-time faculty, instructors, librarians, nurses, counselors, and mental health specialists. So thank you for the floor and, and good evening. I want to start by appreciating a couple of things that are on the agenda tonight. First, the new functional map. We haven't seen this before, but we're under the impression that this is a continuation of the centralization, decentralization work that has begun and stalled several times over the past few years. P F T hopes that this is the first step in the reorganization process recommended by FICMAT. We can't only cite FICMAT when it comes to reducing our course offerings. We must also consider the recommendations regarding our oversized and ever-increasing administrative costs. We're really excited to also see the plans for the COVID nineteen relief dollars, the HERF and CARES money, as we've also not had an opportunity to see those documents or plans before. I want to take note that teaching and learning only, only amounts to nine million of the sixty-seven million dollars cited in those documents. And it doesn't appear from my review of the documents that additional classes were supported through that, through that money. At the risk of being repetitive, P F T will again challenge the approach that we take in our budgeting. We could and should be prioritizing the education of our students wherever possible by offering more sections of the classes that they need, not less. Not doing so with the extra dollars provided only ensures that we serve fewer students and can claim fewer F T S in the future reports we send to the state. I'd like to congratulate interim Chancellor Jackson on her contract extension. P F T is really grateful for the support that Chancellor Jackson has provided in the last several months. It's been a tumultuous time and we really look forward to working with Chancellor Jackson to continue the good work of stabilizing and strengthening Peralta. We're glad to see that the suspension of A P seven, one, two, three is accompanying that contract extension. Processes do matter. I'd like to close by taking the opportunity to caution the board specifically and administration generally against the over-reliance on interim appointments made without input from the faculty, staff, administrators, and students that comprise the Peralta community. Share governance and community input matter too. Thank you and have a great night.
Okay. We have, looking to see who else we have. And Lynn Williams, you can go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. And how much time do I have? Three minutes?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Bellarys and Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, Campus Presidents, public and community at large. My name is Lynn and I'm a, I've been a classified professional for twenty years at Laney College and E O P S Care Program. I would like to just give some gratitude tonight and thankfulness. I would like to give my gratitude to the leadership of S C I U ten, twenty-one throughout the year and year and a half, almost two. But specifically in the last few months, as there's been a lot of discussion around members returning to campus, other campuses, they have been steadfast and resilient towards just not returning to campus, but addressing, and there are approximately three hundred members in the union, their, their overall concerns that they have had throughout this pandemic. I would also like to, I am thankful to Chancellor Jackson for having the town hall meeting October fourth, fourth. It was very revealing. And can I say the pictures that forensic analytical had presented were worth a thousand words. I still have those images in my mind, particularly around the filters, insulation, and the accumulated fecal matter. So thank you for, you know, not just that, that presentation, but all of the presentations during that town hall meeting. And then shortly afterwards, after the town hall presentation, classifieds throughout the various campuses, the four campuses, began receiving return to campus letters as soon as returning October twenty-first, the nineteenth. And so to begin providing face-to-face service to students and, and with welcome arms. My thoughts at that time, and I'm sure others was, is our office safe? Are our buildings safe to provide the various services to students? And are the students, are the students safe? But moving forward with the cooperation, collaboration of the chancellor, HR, campus presidents, SEIU, returning, returning to campus has been postponed. And we are all very thankful for that. And
10 seconds, Lynn.
Okay. So this is what respect looks like. And just remember classified matters, we all matter and thank you.
Wonderful. Now we have Nancy Caton.
Hello. I just am here tonight as a member of the SEIU negotiating team to express my frustration that even though we are still bargaining over working conditions, members have been receiving return to work notices. In response to this, we send out cease and desist, and then the letters are rescinded, and then the whole thing happens again. I know that we're all concerned about serving students, but it feels like the negotiation process isn't being respected. And at the same time, members are confused over these false starts and anxious about what's going on. I'm hopeful that we can reach an agreement soon that will allow members to return to a safe working environment. If we could just allow the process to take place without these distractions. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move over Maura Seeland, Kewano Rollins, and Jamil Tier. And Maura can go first.
Sorry. Good evening. I'm also a member of the negotiation team and I'm grateful to be in this meeting. It's been a long journey for me. I'm here at Peralta 25 years as a classified professional. And I've been active on many committees, including the facilities committee at the district and also at Merritt College. I think what's really important to to acknowledge is that you have a lot of classified professionals that have great expertise in their areas of service. And as soon as May of last year, many committees were meeting to plan the return to campus in a safe way. A lot of those meetings were dismissed or ignored and jumped over to a more, a less aggressive plan from the district. And it wasn't until we got the forensic analytic report did people really understand that our campuses have been sorely neglected in maintenance and operations for these past 20 years. And we all understand, or most of us understand, that it was a budgetary concern from the state. However, we do need to serve our students and our staff and our faculty and our administrators. And we want to do it in a safe way. And we want to feel confident that when we meet on campus, the district has our back and will take care of the safety issues that arise. So I do also want to thank President Johnson and his administrative team for addressing all of the concerns in a patient manner. Sometimes when we do get top down information, it's a little misleading. So he listens and I appreciate it. And I want to thank the negotiation team for also having patience and perseverance. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you so much. Now we have Kewano Rollins.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and everyone. I share the same sentiments as everyone else. I know that our return to campus is inevitable and we, like you, we share your desire to serve our students as we have pre-COVID. However, we have major safety concerns. And while some work sites are better than others, we want to make sure the safety of everyone. In our shared commitment for student safety, it is imperative. We ensure the safety of all of those, all of us that are serving students first and foremost. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Now we have Jamil Tier.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening, President Reese, members of the board, Chancellor Jackson, administrators, public and colleagues. My name is Jamil Tier. I work for the Department of General Services. I've been at the Peralta Community College District for 10 years. And I'm also the vice president of SEIU 1021, the Peralta chapter. I come to you tonight with a plethora of comments from members. And it's encouraging to me to have my bargaining team here tonight to also stand with our members. One of the things that I have continually come to this board to request is that you guys act in our safety, that all of the communications and negotiations that happen, happen in support of the safety of students, of faculty, and of administrators and staff. And so I come here tonight to just re, excuse me, come here tonight to read or double down on that request, to note that we will be back in bargaining on Friday, to note that we have made several asks of the district in terms of safety and security, and to note that we are looking forward to coming to an agreement to ensure that our sites are as safe as they can possibly be while we were still in the middle of a pandemic. I also want to congratulate Chancellor Jackson on her now longer stint with Peralta. We have had wonderful conversations with her and are looking forward to continuing to grow that relationship between SEIU 1021 and Peralta administration. But we'd like to flag a few things that are of note. Staff at the district office have not had the opportunity in the last few years to participate in flex days or to participate in shared governance in a way that allows for the district site to really be integral into those conversations. We look forward to working with the chancellor and her administration to work on this, the structure of shared governance at Peralta in the coming weeks, once we've gotten our TA or side letter finalized and we can return to the site. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamil. We now have Gabrielle Kessler, and I'll move her over as to panelists. Are you there, Gabrielle?
Are you there? I see you. I just don't hear you.
Thank you.
Bob, there you go. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Kessler and I am a new field representative with SEIU 1021. And I'm thrilled to be working with the district and with the members of SEIU Local 1021. Although I'm new, I've been so impressed by Jamil Tier and Richard Tool and the other member leaders and the bargaining team of SEIU 1021. And the reason I've been so impressed by them in our meetings together, in our meetings with the district, is that their focus and commitment has always been on building a stronger Peralta college system and a safer Peralta college system. Coming, coming in as someone new, that's been impressive right off the bat. I'm also impressed by learning about SEIU 1021 members at Peralta who are critical and such an important part in ensuring the smooth operations of the Peralta college system. Doing so successfully, ensuring those operations successfully depend on establishing and maintaining consistent and clear policies and protocols about safety, particularly in regards to COVID-19. And while it's clear that each college has different needs that are particular and unique to those places, the you, there's a universal need for safety protocols that are ensured to all employees and critically to all students. This isn't just about our members. It's about ensuring that when students come on campus, they are in a safe space for learning. And that's why I'm asking all of you to support SEIU 1021 and its member leaders in their bargaining efforts to address critical safety issues, whether those be HVAC systems, vaccine, how vaccination mandates rolled out, or or leaves for COVID. These policies or or telecommuting, any of these policies are essential to ensuring a successful reopening and ensuring that that reopening is sustainable. Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you so much, Gabriel. That, Vice President, you win. It looks like that is it for the public comment. I have no more raised hands.
Thank you very much. President Reese, Gavels, back to you.
Thank you. Let's move on to 3.12, the chancellor's reports. Chancellor?
There. I'm trying to unmute myself and I finally succeeded. Good evening, everyone, to the Board of Trustees, to students, colleagues, and our community members. The college presidents have provided written reports as part of the board packet. And in consideration of time, we would like to defer their time to Agenda Item 4.1, their report on the status of CARES and HERF funds. However, I do have three announcements. I want to thank everyone, from the trustees, to the staff, the faculty, administrators and students, all of you who were involved to help foster the successful virtual visit from ACCJC held October 18th and 19th. The comments from the team were extremely positive. And we look forward to the commission's decision at their January meeting. And hopefully it will be reflected in the positive comments that we got from the team. My second comment is this year, the senate passed, the state senate passed, and the governor signed and approved SB 169, student housing. The state chancellor's office let the bid documents for these funds, October the 7th, for colleges and districts to apply. We're working with Alma Strategies, who has worked with us in the past on construction projects and the annual five year plan. And what SB 169 does is provides, it is to provide two buckets of funding. One is a planning grant, which is due October the 31st. And the second part is for the actual construction. And the goal is to increase the number and the stock of affordable student housing and to prioritize low income student housing. The initial applications are due to the Department of Finance, which is a little bit different because it will not be going directly to the chancellor's office. And we will meet the October 31st deadline, even though, like I said, we were notified and the the actual bid came out on October the 7th. Peralta is submitting an application for all four of its colleges for a total of $10 million, and that is to cover all planning and design costs under this first part. So we are trying to cover all items from feasibility study to architectural design, the gamut, up until we actually can apply for those additional funds to actually construct the items. And then my last announcement, I want to thank student trustee Hogan, who will be representing students on the district's participatory governance committee. And we welcome your input, trustee Hogan, and appreciate your willingness to step forward. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor. I believe that we have one other person who came in late to make public comment. We're just going to allow that person to make the comment before we go on with the agenda.
I've moved her over, Maura.
I believe we heard from Maura already. Am I mistaken?
I called her name, but she raised her hand.
I remember hearing from her.
Okay.
Maybe not. Apologies. Oh, yes, I, we have, we've already heard.
Oh.
Okay, we're good then.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Okay. Let's move on to the next item, 4.1, presentations of the CARES HERF funds report. I'll give that to the college presidents.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So Mai, do you have that? That up for us?
I do. I am calling it up right now.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. So good evening, everyone. I want to begin by thanking the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to share what the four colleges have done and are doing in terms of utilizing these emergency relief funds. And our goal is that by the end of this presentation, that we all have a shared and broader understanding of the guidelines and priorities that have directed our efforts. But before we even go to the first slide, I would be remiss if I did not convey the thanks and appreciation of the of the presidents for the support that we've received from our respective teams and the district office in terms of putting this presentation together. So just want to say thank you for that. So if we can go into the slide, next slide. So I'm providing a general overview. I think it's helpful to review the categories of funding and the guidelines around administering the money. So first, CARE, coronavirus aid relief and economic security. CARES Act is really represents HERF, round one, but we typically refer to as CARES. Initially, these funds were intended to be spent by June 30th, 2021. I want to point that out, but the deadline was extended to December 31st. It gives us a little bit more time. So for the CARES monies, there's really, and this is going to be true throughout the presentation when you look at how the money, the spending is, the buckets are broken down. There are really two buckets of funding. You have your direct student aid funding and your institutional portion. So the direct student aid is really, for lack of a better term, grants. Okay. So these are grants to students that can be used for housing, childcare, oh, I think I lost the slide, housing, childcare, fees, course material, food, technology, and 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 things of that sort. I guess I'll just keep talking while we get the thing back up. And the institutional portion, we were really given broad discretion for how we're going to spend these funds. For the colleges, we really just focused on two areas, which is number one, transitioning to distance education, which included technology needs and teacher training. And the second area would be PPE and safety assessment. So that's how we broke down the institutional funds. For HERF II, as you can see, we received these funds this spring, very recently. And we have until next summer to spend those. I know it's been an ongoing concern about making sure that we spend the money. So we're on track to do that. But I want to point something out. The important change with HERF II is that we were given even greater flexibility in terms of utilizing these funds. Specifically, we were allowed to use the institutional portion to do things like make additional financial aid payments to students. There was a wonderful effort to erase student debt and to also carry out other student support activities. Those are just a few examples of what we did with HERF II. And finally, HERF III, that's part of the American Rescue Plan, as you can see. And this really focused on the screening, the monitoring and remediation efforts to 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 suppress COVID-19. And as you will see over the rest of the presentation, the overwhelming majority, okay, the overwhelming majority of this funding to the colleges was pooled together as part of a district led effort to ensure that our sites met, meet OSHA and Alameda County and industry guidelines that pertains to accessing and occupying our buildings. And we still have another eight months to go. And we still have another eight months to go in terms of spending those funds. So next slide, Mai. Okay, notice a lot of information here, so let's just turn our attention to the allocated funds for each institution. I was going to give you a second to kind of look that over, because there are a few things on the slide that I want to make sure that I note. Okay, so the first thing I want to know, for each of the colleges, the district student aid allocation increased dramatically for HERF III. In fact, if you look at it, the money in HERF III on district student aid, it goes up nearly fivefold. The total is 3.85 million in the first two rounds, but you can see by HERF III, it's up to 18.7 million when you add them up across the colleges. So a significant investment in direct student aid allocation. Let's, another thing for HERF III, that you see for the first time, the direct student aid award amount is actually more than the institutional award amount. Again, I think that reflects a greater appreciation and understanding of the importance of getting money directly into the hands of the students. And third, just as a point of clarification, you'll notice for the minority-serving institution allocation, the last column, Laney and Merritt College, we did not receive, those two colleges did not receive HERF III MSI allocation as those funds were granted to BCC and COA primarily for their status as Asian-American and Native American Pacific Islander-serving institutions and Hispanic-serving institutions. Laney and Merritt had not yet received those designations by the time the terminations for this funding was made. So I just want to note that if you're wondering why the non-applicable is there. Mai, can we go to slide four? So this slide provides an overview of all the money that was spent. And we broke it down into three general categories. Funding related to directly supporting our students. The second area is activities to support teaching and learning. And the third category was just return to campus and our safety efforts. So just let you look at that for a second. One thing I wanted to point out, across the colleges, you can see again this emphasis on direct student support. Across the college, you can see that more than 50% of all the money spent, about 33.7 million, was designated to directly address the financial needs of our students. So that's huge. And I think that it's also important to note that the other half of all the spending is really aimed at addressing the need to support and augment the quality of our instruction and student services, as well as ensuring a safe educational setting for our students and employees alike. Okay, Mai, let's go to the last slide, five. And this last slide is just really just to provide a better sense of the type of things that were funded in each of the areas, the direct student support area, teaching and learning area, and the return to campus and safety area. The type of things that were funded in each of these areas, so we provided this breakdown. And I just want to say this is intended to be a representative list rather than a panoptic one. Just gives you some of the things that we were doing. Okay, let you look at that slide a little bit. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Nathaniel Jones.
All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mai, if you don't mind, can you advance the slide, please? So this picks up on what Dr. Johnson had indicated. This is a graphic representation of the way in which we have planned to utilize the more than $66 million in HERF funding that we receive. Over 50% of the funds are allocated towards direct student support. 14% of the resources are allocated for teaching and learning, and the remaining 36% is allocated to return to campus and/or safety-related matters. The specific amounts do vary from campus to campus, somewhat based on the specific needs of the campus, i.e. the size of their facility, as well as other specific characteristics related to the priorities of their leadership, priorities based on student demand and needs. Next slide, please. Here is essentially a summary of the CARES Act funding, or HERF I. For this pot of resources, essentially, all but a small amount of the CARES Act funding has been expended, with the exception of a relatively small amount for Laney and for Merritt, which they are essentially committed and plan for and will be expended in the very, very near term. Next slide, please. Okay, with regard to HERF II funding, here, things are a little bit different. Overall, we have expended nearly 45% of the available funding, which is $21.3 million. As indicated, there are some campus differences. Berkeley has expended 42.4%, College of Alameda, 52.3%, Laney, 51.1%, and Merritt at 60.6% of the resources. As Dr. Johnson had indicated, we continue to spend the majority of the resources on direct student support, in part because it represents our priority, but also because it's the manner in which we needed to expend those resources. It's restricted to those particular uses, whereas the institutional component, we could use it for a number of different things. However, the direct aid to students is limited to just serving students and their needs. Next slide, please. As was seen on earlier slides, for the most part, HERF III funding, we just received it. This occurred late in the spring timeframe, May-June timeframe. And so there has been very, very limited amount of resources that have actually been expended to date. However, the majority of the $37.9 million that has been allocated under HERF III will be spent in the following manner. Nearly 50% will go to direct student support, about 10.5% going to teaching and learning, and 40% will be going to return to campus and safety efforts, as was indicated previously. It is, these resources have been allocated in this manner for compliance, as well as to support the safe return to campus. As you've heard from many of our classified professional colleagues, returning to a safe environment is a high priority, and we have heard you, and we have allocated a substantial amount of the HERF funding to address those issues and concerns in a thoughtful and a responsive manner. And I turn the next over to Dr. Garcia.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones. My next slide, please. So there has been a lot of discussion around the return to campus. We had colleagues join us in public comments tonight, certainly stressing the importance of ensuring that our facilities, that our campuses, the spaces in which we work, in which we learn, are safe for employees and students and the community alike. And so the following slides that are going to, the slides, sorry, that are going to follow this are providing a little bit more detail into what that means and what efforts have been underway. And truly, this has been a collective effort across the colleges with our district team to really come to understand what it is that we need to do to remediate and support the college campuses. And so some of the slides are going to look a little bit familiar from the October 4th Peralta Town Hall that Dr. Jackson hosted. They might also be familiar in some of the college-specific town halls or campus communications that have come out. Next slide, please. So to focus specifically on HERF III, the college institutional portions have had a level of assumptions in play. The first is the employee impact pay, which our colleagues in human resources and upon agreement with classified professionals, were finalizing those particular impact pays. So you can see across the colleges, the portions, that each of the four colleges is contributing to that $1 million employee impact pay. As you can see here, we have about 15 million that is going specific to return to campus efforts and safety. And momentarily, there'll be a few more detailed slides. And on the third column, wanting to address why you see some zeros and why in other areas you see some allocations. And what you're going to see in later slides is the estimation of the comprehensive and collective costs on return to campus is exhausting the current institutional portion allocation that both College of Alameda and Merritt College have. Berkeley City College and Laney College are still showing some funds available after that particular component. So these two colleges will proceed, as in previous rounds, with input from the campus community on how best to use that. Next slide, please. So part of trying to understand how to support the return to campus efforts and therefore understand and make plans about the allocation is really taking into consideration the square footage of the facilities that we have across the district. So in this particular slide, you see the representation of the percentage that each of the five locations, and in this case, it's the four colleges and the district office, what are representation of the total, just over a million square feet across the district. And so, for example, in the slides that will now follow, you're going to see that the costs associated with each of the colleges directly corresponds with these percentage allocations. So BCC will see consistently a 15% of the total cost, College of Alameda at 23%, Laney College at 34%, Merritt College at 23%, the district of 5%. And so to provide some additional details and examples, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Besikov.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Next slide, please. So as we continue to look at the American Rescue Plans Act funding, or HERF III, I think this part of our presentation takes us to really two main questions. Number one, what activities constitute return to campus? And number two, how is that return taking place? So to start off with and to answer the first question of what constitutes a return to campus, we wanted to provide a summary of the activities that have been happening. And I would put these into essentially some categories. First of all, you see kind of the, you see project management and healthy building science investments on the part of the district and the colleges. That that's something that really, just off the top, having that infrastructural leadership as we move forward into kind of this next frontier of ours, it's something that's critical. Also, just the way our campuses look and the way they appear as we return, things such as signage, the additional security we have, Dr. Johnson mentioned it earlier, the fact that screening is an aspect of HERF III that we look at and move forward. Another thing that's very important is cleanliness and safety of our campuses, okay? So as we look at those, we see, you see things that here that speak to cleaning. And then you also see things that speak to personal protective equipment, or PPE. And then finally, the real, big investment that takes place that is also constituting our return speaks to our air and our water on our campuses. So really, as you look at this bulleted list, you kind of see everything that's on this list falling into those buckets, if you will. Now to the second question, how is the return taking place, or how has it been taking place? Well, really, as we've worked and collaborated with District General Services, there essentially have been three phases. You can see Phase 1 there, which has been the beginnings of transition, as well as cleaning. Phase 2A, which is a continuation of cleaning and then preparation to address our needs. And then Phase 2B, which are investments in more sustainable allocations, and you can see a few examples that are there. Next slide, please. So this next slide, as I walk you through it, and there are a lot of numbers here, I guess we go on to two more questions. Number one, who is doing this work? And number two, how much does it cost? And you may remember Dr. Garcia, in slide number 12, referred to the allocation of the funds by campus. And as you look at the numbers in this presentation, I hope one thing that rings throughout is consistency. And this is one case where you can certainly say that, as you see the percentages for the allocations remain the same. As you go down and look at the left side, we begin to answer the question of who is doing the work. You see the names of a lot of the vendors that we have engaged to do this work, but not just the names of the vendors, but more importantly, we've provided you with information of exactly what exact work they're doing. And so as you go down this list, you can see with each company where there is one, you can see the work that they're doing. And then as you go across this chart, you see the amounts that are being spent at each college and at the district. So if you go down now to where it says Phase 1 cost, what that does is it takes the totals for each campus and for the district for the work that's being done by all of the vendors that you see with the description of what they're doing. And that's essentially that first red line, if you will. Then the first yellow line shows the allocations to each of the colleges for HERF III, okay? And then the second line, you can see, takes that same red number, if you will, and deducts it, and then leaves at the last line the balance that is left over for Phases 2A and 2B. So as you kind of walk through this, and I realize there are a lot of numbers here, you can see just who's doing the work, how much it's costed, how much it's cost, excuse me, how it's totaled, and then what's left over after Phase 1. And I'll just pause for a second, as there's a lot to take in here. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so I referenced Phases 2A and 2B. And following the same approach, you can see the dollar amounts being totaled. And again, to be very clear about who is doing the work, if you look on the left side, again, allocations to each of the sites stays the same by percentage, based on square footage. And then on the left side, you can see exactly the work that's being done. And in the case of an outside vendor, the name of that vendor and the work that they are doing. Then on the red line, the first red line, you see the totals for Phase 2A. And the two things that you see different are the notation as regards to project management, there's a different name there. And then you also see the allocation for water filters. So that's kind of, while there's been a continuation of a lot of what's in Phase 1, those are things that are distinctive about Phase 2A. And then you can see, of course, the sum totals in the first red line. And then as we move to Phase 2B, again, same allocations to each of the sites, you see the more sustainable investments that the district and the colleges are making and what they total as well. And I'll just stop for a second for everyone to take in those numbers. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so if you wanted to grand total the last two slides and you were getting excited and looking forward to seeing what that would look like, this is the slide for you. This takes Phases 1, 2A, and 2B and totals them, and then shows the ending balances. And in Slides 9, Slide 9 that Dr. Jones presented, and then Slide 11 that Dr. Garcia presented, you saw that for Berkeley City College and for Laney, there were leftover balances that got allocated towards teaching and learning. You'll notice, again, speaking on the theme of consistency, that those numbers, as you go back and review Slides 9, 11, and then 16, that those numbers are still the same, and those are the totals. And those are the totals that we arrived at. Next slide, please. So this has been a lot of information to share with you distinguished members of the board, Chancellor Jackson and our community. But within it, we did not want a presentation that was not complete. It was some that was something that was very important. And we wanted to be able to have this presentation present for the full capacity to understand where the funds come from and what the colleges are doing. And for this reason, following this present this presentation, we've provided five different appendices for you. Appendix 1 provides links to HERF and information about it. And you will find that with each of those links, there is a .gov address. So in other words, these are straight from the federal government in terms of the regulations for them. Appendix 2 provides guidelines for allowable expenses for CARES, HERF 2 and HERF 3, essentially presented in executive summary format. In the same way, appendix number 3, while 2 shows us what you can do, appendix 3 shows things that are not allowable and which which have been important for us all to abide by. And that's slide number 25 in this presentation. There's also a budget sheet, an appendix 4, that shows expenditures as of 9/30/2021. And then appendix 5 shows each college's contributions toward districts expenditures. And with that said, I'll go ahead and turn things back over to my distinguished colleague, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Besikoff. Next slide, please. So as we prepare to conclude our presentation here, we wanted to just provide, so what is the summary? What what have the colleges been doing? What has it looked like? And so at this particular point, we have confidence that the allocation of the resources reflect our priorities for direct student aid support, teaching and learning, return to campus and safety. That campus and district engagement has been, we've had input. And with each round, with each process, with each passing month, there's more and more. And as you have heard, just in terms of the consultation, the discussions that we've been having at the district level, on the college campus level, each of the colleges has examples where there's either task forces or requests for proposal processes that follow a mini grant style, conversations within college budget committees, and of course, consultation within the chancellor's cabinet. So really, the end result is that our CARES funds have been expended with the small amount that President Johnson alluded to. That HERF 2, there's a plan where they're either funds have been spent or they're encumbered and categorized by those three categories. And that HERF 3 really is focusing and prioritizing the healthy and safe return to campus. And so at this point, I really want to acknowledge the work and leadership of interim Vice Chancellor Atheria Smith around these efforts. Interim Vice Chancellor for Human Resources, Ron McKinley, for the coordination that's happening with our employee groups. And quite honestly, throughout the chancellor's cabinet, every single vice chancellor who has a lead area is trying is ensuring that we're keeping the holistic approach. And so lastly, within this presentation, or excuse me, within this process, that we're showing that we are on track for full expenditure of the HERF funds. As we speak this week, we have Vice Presidents of Student Services across the district reviewing how the HERF 3 direct student aid will be spent. Weekly conversations around our return to campus. And I know we say weekly because that's the scheduled meeting, but on the daily, we are connecting around return to campus efforts. And next slide, so in our last slide here, we just want to thank the community as President Johnson shared our, could you advance? I think we have one more slide, my, the college teams, all the discussions that we've had. And time permitting, President Napoli Abella Reese, should you have any questions, we would be more than happy to entertain those for you. Thank you very much for the time for us to share this information with you all this evening.
Thank you, trustees. I'm sure we have several questions. Trustees.
Through the chair.
Yes, 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 yes. I'm sorry, Trustee Jenkins.
Great presentation, excellent teamwork. You guys really worked well together on that one. I have a couple of questions specifically around how are our students notified that there was student aid available? And what percentage of our students? What percentage of our students actually got that student aid?
I don't mind answering this, colleagues. So the the percentage of students, I feel like in this point, we'll need to get back to you on the exact number simply because there was a lot more, as in HERF 1 or in the CARES 1, you know, 50% of the funds went to direct student aid and per federal guidelines, really prioritizing Pell-eligible students, so really looking at low-income students. And with each round, the allowable expenditures were starting to broaden. So we start to look at different things. So for example, in HERF 2, in one of the slides that President Jones was referring to, we talk about the student debt relief. So each of the four campuses had hundreds of thousands of dollars. I know for BCC, we were over 700, I think Laney and Merritt. You know, so we were able to provide some debt relief, looking at students who had incurred debt during March 2020 through this past year, in essence, where they weren't able to pay their student bills. We just assumed that as part of the COVID impact. I do know that our Vice Presidents of Student Services are working very closely with Vice Chancellor Siri Brown and our IR team, and they are constantly reviewing the data. So I know that we do have the data related to the numbers of students, the classifications of students, and then even the disaggregated data. And so would be happy to connect and with Chancellor Jackson providing that communication back to the board.
And how are the students being notified about the ability of funds?
Thank you. Sorry about that. So the communication was predominantly handled by the Student Services teams across the campus, and you'll find that most of the college websites were also promoting it. I will share, however, again, with each rolling process and for this last one, HERF 3, so for Berkeley City College alone, it's $4 million. So our team, just this past week, we were talking about what the communications rollout needs to look like so that every single student knows that it's available and then provided the information. That is something that's going to be replicated across all the colleges in the processes. So there's nothing unique about BCC in that. I'm just using it as an example, but each of the four colleges will engage with that. And I think the word is clear that for this last round, we definitely need to start letting students know now that this will be happening over the next two terms.
Absolutely. And last question, Madam President. In digging deeper into the student debt relief, are we able to clear out debt that was incurred prior to March 2020 or the pandemic starting?
No, we were not.
I don't believe so. I was pausing there. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, please.
No, no. We're restricted for when the funds were actually allocated. So we could not clear student debt that was incurred prior to March of 2020.
Okay, thank you.
And I would add to that, Trustee Jenkins, with each successive round, the requirements under student direct aid change, the eligibility requirements change. So for example, under CARES Act, students that were undocumented and the like were expressly excluded. And so some of those eligibility requirements did change, becoming more inclusive as the passage of additional rounds of funding, which was great news. But so we had to stay within those eligibility requirements in order to make those awards to students.
If I may also just respond briefly to Trustee Jenkins' question, as far as the student debt relief and that piece of it, one of the things that we have is we have the numbers of students and we have the amounts. And it's certainly as we look forward to things such as promoting our spring 2022 enrollments and doing that, really have using that as an opportunity to reach out as we, you know, we have the names and the contacts of those students to really say, you know, this great thing's taking place and we want you back.
And the financial aid websites have the information. That is the one of the primary places. Thank you.
Thank you, presidents. Trustees, student trustee Cooper.
Hello. Forgive me, is this might be a different answer for for each of the the colleges and our presenters, but I'm curious, in the return to campus planning, how were the associated students of each college given the opportunity to participate effectively in the formulation and development of the return to campus plans pursuant to BP 2510, item 3, which is pursuant to Title V, Section 51023.7? Or N plus 1, right?
One example, and I think this might have happened at the multiple college campuses. So part of the discussion is bringing the information. And so the associated students is the recognized body similar to the recognition of Academic Senate and Classified Senate. So in those spaces, information was shared, questions were gathered. In the weekly return to campus meetings, we provide and bring forth those questions, those comments and recommendations. So the associated students is precisely the space where that happens as well as any governance space where student representatives sit. The expectation is that they then will go back to their constituency group, share the information, gather the questions, bring back thoughts and recommendations.
Yeah, and just to add to that, thank you, President Garcia. I would say, I know for Merritt College, it was discussed through CBC, specifically at the May 26 meeting, College Budget Council, as well as Marie Amboy taking the lead on the return to campus task force. I don't know specifically if there was an outreach effort made to ASMC, but there was definitely no one was precluded from participating in that.
Speaking for Laney, in addition to our Health and Safety and our Facilities Committee, as well as the College Council and the President's Cabinet, all bodies on which the students have, which the student government appoints representation. We've also just starting back in early, late spring and going into fall, we did have weekly return to campus task forces and task force and also kept student leadership in the loop on that.
For College of Alameda, we did not have student government folks in place. And we did, however, as part of our task force, invite student participation on the task force to provide input into the process. So so very similar to what the other colleges have indicated.
Great. Thank you, President.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all really great news. President Johnson, if I could just ask a quick follow up on that. How would students have been able to access the Budget Committee when the agenda for that date wasn't posted at that time? Or weeks after?
Specifically, you're asking specifically if a student was not, how would a student be aware of our standing college budget committees?
How would they access it if the public meeting wasn't posted? Because you said nobody was obstructed from accessing it, but it wasn't posted.
Yeah, I don't I don't know specifically if it was posted within 48 hours or 72 hours or whatever. I know you have some feelings about the extent to which committees should be adhering to Brown Act. I would think that the whoever, and I can't recall the name, perhaps it's perhaps as you may, perhaps it's someone else on the SMC, their student representation at the standing budget meetings. So if there was someone present at that meeting, then they would have been they would have been made aware of the discussion about the expenditure of CARES funds.
Thank you, President Johnson. Let us move on to our other trustees. Trustee Vice President Gonzalez, UN.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up real quickly with the College of Alameda. President Jones, did I hear you say that there is not a functioning or there was not a functioning student government?
That is correct. We are continuing to hold elections, but we did not have, you know, student government personnel in place thus far.
Okay, I will follow up with the chancellor, just with my questions on that. That's obviously, I'm sure, disturbing to you as well as to every.
Exactly. It's certainly not. It's certainly not for lack of of effort. We have really, really tried creating incentives and everything. So I don't know the full details, but I can tell you that there's been a great deal of effort in terms of outreach and trying to 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 do that.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot at the moment, and I'll follow up with the chancellor, and I'm sure she'll take it down through the chain of command and come back and let us know what your plan is. Thank you very much.
You should be aware of that if you go to the ASCOA paper.
I am sorry, trustee Cooper, but we do have a protocol here, and I believe Vice President.
Y'all been talking about the turn all that around.
I believe at this point that chancellor would like to speak.
I was just going to speak to trustee Ewing's comment. Excuse me. Just since I've arrived, I know that we've hired two college activities directors, and I believe one of those was at College of Alameda. And I'm not saying that that's why they don't have participation, but I know that that sometimes contributes to a single source of contact for students at a specific college. So I just wanted to point that out. And I do know that the college and President Jones and I have been discussing that, that that is a priority to reach out to get some students. And one of the things that we've talked about is in the case that there is no student, do we have a policy where a student can be appointed? And right now, we don't have that. So that's one of the things that I want all of the college activities to work with and to work with students to get their input on what if that does happen? What would be the process? What would be the priorities? And we've discussed this at the senior level about student participation. But we really need student government, the leaders of student government at the campuses to make the appointments to the appropriate shared bodies, which is why I really am appreciative that student trustee Hogan stepped forward and accepted the position to work with us at the PGC.
Yes, thank you, Chancellor. That's fantastic. Trustee Bonilla.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank all four college presidents and the chancellor for a comprehensive overview of these funds. It's been a very trying and challenging, you know, we're going on 20 months of unprecedented, you know, just life experiences. The fact that we have some student leadership in place and not others, it shouldn't, it's not surprising to us. The fact that we are resilient and we're still here. And you all are showing up every day to do the amazing work of, how I always tell you, college presidents, no one would know, your campuses had been shut down with the amount of amazing work and energy that you all put forward. We are not, you know, there's always room for improvement, right? Always. And I think the commitment and the intent that you all have put forward, and I say this to all constituents, right? I say this to faculty, I say this to classified staff, I say this to all of the SEIU folks who showed up today. Students, you are all amazing. You're resilient. We, and if you haven't told yourself that lately, please do, go home, stare in the mirror and just say it once so that you can get back tomorrow and do it all over again, because that's that's why we're here. So amazing work. Thank you for the details. I'm always looking forward for more details, more information. And you all step up to the challenge always and bring that information forward. And so I just thank everyone for their efforts towards making the student experience as best as possible, given the restrictions and all the limitations. So again, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll and I'll put forth my comment. College presidents, this is incredible detail. This is fantastic detail. This is fantastic detail. I think it really gives us a clear sense of where we've been and where we're going. And I am particularly grateful at the fact that you all articulated very eloquently the ways in which our HERF3 funds were used to take care of our colleges in order to get our colleges ready for return to campus. And I think that that cannot be un, uh, that cannot be overestimated at all because there was so much work that needed to be done, but we needed to make sure that our colleges were safe. So thank you for ensuring that that um, that that came out in terms of your presentation. So I have a question for you. This might be my misunderstanding. I know that there are three phases of the return to col, to campus, right? Three phases. And are we referring to those phases as one, two A and two B? Or is, is it one, two A, two B, and then there's a three? Is it?
It is three, uh, phase one, and then phase two A and two B. Those are the three distinct phases.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and the reason I had my head down earlier was because I was crunching these numbers because these numbers are, um, there's so many of them. And, 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 and as I look at the last slide that I think President Besikov was, was pertaining to or was explaining. So just so that I can kind of read this correctly, um, where in, in terms of HERF3 and HERF3 plus DA, plus DAC. So the amount on the right-hand side is how much we are allocating in HERF3, which is the sixteen million, six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty-six, right? That's where we are. Um, or that, actually, I'm sorry, that is the HERF3 allocation, but our total cost that we've spent thus far is fifteen million. So right now, we just have a delta of a million dollars in terms of the HERF3 allocation. And I should have asked this question when we were on the slide, my apologies. And I don't know if you can answer it. So, so if you can't answer it, that's fine. We can just go back to it. Um, I, I think that the one thing that, that um kind of keeps on tugging at me is as we go a little bit further up um on one of the slides and just write this, write this down. I, I think that the HERF allocation um was seventeen million, six hundred and ninety uh, as opposed to sixteen million, six hundred and ninety. So if you look at page, if you look at page sixteen, and if we compare it to um page four, yes, page sixteen and page four, just our HERF allocations. And again, no need to answer this right now. If we can just take a look at this later on and see if there's a, a bit of a discrepancy there. So on slide.
Napoleon Bellarice, um, just if, if I may on this one, and, and fellow colleagues, please correct me if I'm wrong. We, the very question they're asking, we spent a lot of time connecting on. And I'll just share that between interim Vice Chancellor Ahmed and DGS, that one million reflects the one million um of uh COVID impact pay. So in the slide that I was speaking to, um, the very first uh left column showed the amounts going down the colleges. That's where the one million comes off. So then the remaining becomes the net HERF3 allocation that's you being used in the slides that President Besikov referred to. I hope that helps answer your question.
Totally does. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any particular slides that you guys want me to go to?
No, because my questions were just answered.
Okay.
That says, thank you, Dr. Garcia. That was excellent. Um, and that was my only question. And again, I cannot, and I cannot say enough how excellent this presentation was. It just makes me feel good. It makes me feel good, and I hope it makes our community feel good in terms of how much work has been done and how much work is being done to get our campuses, our colleges safe. So, thank you. Um, okay, let us move up. Do I, I don't see any more questions. Okay, I see, I'm sorry. Uh, I see a couple of questions here. Uh, Vice President Gonzalez, UN and Student Trustee Cooper.
I think trustee Cooper was before me. Why don't you have him go first? Trustee Cooper, why don't you jump in?
Uh, thank you. I, I was just going to say in response to your earlier comment before I was rudely interrupted uh, that um, the COA, the ASCOA student candidates have been posted on their website. So you all be excited to go uh check that out. Um, and in response to the uh procedure that really felt like a discriminatory application upon myself because people have been jumping in all over this meeting, all over past meetings in the brief fashion that I just did. This is the only time I've ever heard anybody cited for it, especially in the harsh manner that you just did to me.
You're muted, President Reese.
Thank you for that. Let's go to Vice President Gonzalez, UN, please.
Thank you. Um, I didn't want my one question around uh student participation to overshadow the bigger point that uh President Reese made. It's hard to spend a million dollars. It's really hard to spend sixty-six million dollars without just wasting the money. And I think what's clear is that everybody's got a lot of questions, that it's not always clear who needs to be brought in on what set of questions because it's a moving target. You're trying to figure out how to ask the right question and get to the right answer in a timely manner. Um, what's really helpful about this kind of overview is that um we can see a lot of work being done across a whole range of concerns. Um, and I think the part that's particularly challenging is, as trustee Benia said, I, this has just been crisis-level uh work all the way across. And I think, you know, not only, we, we noticed this in the instruction and student services side because that's the kind of the immediate impact on, on students and the, the primary mission. I think what we don't see is that on the general services side, uh, not only are we trying to plan for and efficiently spend a huge amount of bond money and then do the regular upkeep, but then go back and fix all of the stuff that uh simply is not acceptable in this day and age with the, you know, was probably never acceptable, the, the, the standards of the campuses. But in this day and age, trying to go back and fix that. So um, you know, hats off. Um, and whatever harsh kind of words come up in the middle of a lot of anxiety and, and so forth, please, you know, don't let that be the thing that sits with you because I think there's really a lot of gratitude for many people, even while there's disappointment, even while there's frustration and so forth. And you're going to see that from the board as much as you see that from each other. So um, thank you. That, that, that's kind of the main thing I want to say, not, boy, you messed up that one, but thank you.
That's a great comment to end on. Uh, thank you all. Let's move on to our next item. So our next item is, I don't know what our next item is. Sorry, let me.
We're at five-point-one.
Thank you.
No problem.
To five-point-one, please. Five-point-one, first reading of the new functional map. Dr. Janet.
I was gonna say, is Dr. Fokes here? I didn't, I didn't see her.
I don't see her either.
So I would ask, um, I know the ALOs are here, and I know that Dr. Brown um was the district ALO. So um Siri, would you like to just give an overview? This is the first reading. Um, we've been working on this for a long time, but I think we finally have come to some consensus over format. Um, but I, I know that the ALOs have been leading the charge on this. So if you could, Dr. Brown, um, in any of the ALOs from the campuses, um, Dr. Vasconcelis, I think Dr. Hay is here. Um, I'm not sure.
I believe they are honest panelists.
Okay.
Um, Chancellor.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Chancellor, I'd be happy to uh go over the functional map. Uh, if that's what you're, oh, one, um, sure. Um, so uh, we engaged in uh conversating about a district, district functional map. This was one of the uh requirements from ACCJC. And um, the process that we went through was to uh list out the different functions, which are on the left-hand column, um, where there's a district role and a college role where there's overlap. So the list of functions is not everything that, that we do in this district, but it is the areas where we have a lot of overlap. And um, the idea here is to delineate out sp, more specifically about what the role of the college is and what the role of the district is. So you'll notice on the left-hand side that, that um for the functions, uh, we list the appropriate BP and AP. Uh, and then uh we listed the district role. And the way that we did this was that Leeds, uh Leeds uh vice chancellors and the CTIO uh worked with their various teams to list out what their role was. And at the same time, the colleges uh usually led by uh Vice President, either administrative services or student services or instruction. They worked together and consulted with their various teams to list out the college roles. And um, as you see, when you look through this, there are areas where it's really clear, you know, that uh what the district does, what the college does, and, and the delineation is clear. But then you also can see that there are areas where there um on the right-hand column where there are gaps, uh inaccuracies, missing functions, um, and there, there's a need for more conversation to clarify certain aspects of the roles. And um, in doing this process, what was, what most of us said was that this was really illuminating for, for us to do because it's not always clear. Uh, sometimes people aren't clear really what the district does. Um, or you know, what the work of the colleges ends up being in related to a specific function. And so it was uh, it was really wonderful to work together on this and to see it evolve. Um, it's evolved to a really good state here that you're seeing tonight. Um, but we started off, you know, just from scratch, um, taking a look and listing out these various functions. So um, that's, that's just the overall summary that I'll provide to you uh, since Dr. Fokes wasn't able to join us. And if anyone wants to add, uh, they're more than welcome to.
And I would, thank you very much, Dr. Brown. Um, I also um know that President Besikov provided an overview um today to his campus on the functional map. And so maybe to give a perspective from a, a campus uh point of view. But I, I, before you do, Booty, I, I just want to say one thing. When we, when I was an ALO and we did functional maps, we tried to do them around the standards, like standard one and list out the things that were responsible by, by the district and what was responsible at the college or if there was shared um commitment on doing some things. What, going through this process for us helped us to delineate sometimes for the first time why we have problems and why things fall through the cracks because no one was looking at it or different viewpoints were being taken on it. So it really helped us on a foundational level um going forward, as Siri said, to identify where those gaps are. So as we move forward with implementing new systems and going online, those are items that we need to take into account so that we aren't repeating those same behaviors, even though we have an automated system. So um, Dr. Besikov, if you would just take a few minutes from a, a college point of view and how that's helping you even at your um Laney College.
Sure. Uh, as Chancellor Jackson mentioned, um, and I know especially I'm thinking of President Napoli Bellarice. Um, you all have read accreditation reports before, and you know in the um, in the preface section, there is a, a functional map that speaks to each of the standards. This is a much deeper dive. Um, it goes, I, I, you could actually technically say it goes from A to T, if you will, um, in terms of thirty, and I counted them thirty different areas in which um there was exploration into uh the roles that the district and the college play um within any processes. And among the thirty I counted, that didn't even really take into account subsets. For example, within budget, um, I counted budget as one, but within budget, you have things like payroll, finance, purchasing, and really kind of have that deep dive exploration to, to look at things. And um, as someone who has also been an ALO and, and prepared reports and even done functional maps, independent of what typically is in a, in an institutional self-evaluation report, uh, this, this one is, you know, pretty profound. Also, um, I have to go, our, our ALOs um along the way, uh, especially at the beginning of the month, um, went out and sought feedback from our campus constituency groups. And that's also something that I would certainly be remiss if I did not add. So um, really just um, I, I would say this is a very profound document, just looking at it in terms of roles and just wanted to add that.
Thank you. We have quite a few questions. We have trustee Withrow, trustee Handy at this moment. I know that I have a few.
I'd like to um segue from the last comment that um, this is a tremendous uh drill. This is a tremendous education, if you will, you could use that term, on uh how we function and, and um in, in detail. And yes, you're looking at only the overlap, but um forty-four pages of small print. Quite a bit. It's hard for me to believe that uh there's no gaps, if you will, or need to improvement in the technology development planning. That's one of the few areas where you got um the district and the colleges, and you don't, you don't show any gaps. Is there a reason for that?
There are gaps. There are gaps, trustee Withrow. And, and I know that um CTIO Manuelli is looking at that. Um, it has gone to the District Technology Committee as part of their goals um that they established when we had our Planning and Budget Integration Summit um in July. Or was it, was in, I'm sorry, it was in uh September. So we are aware of those. They're not reflected in this particular document. And this is the first reading. It's not complete. And we plan on bringing it back to the board um at sometime in November. So at our November meeting is our target date.
Thank you very much. Um, and I wasn't, I wasn't trying to be humorous about it. I just, it, it, the, the, the technology area is very complex, and there is have to be a, a lot of what we're not. But um, where we have gaps or shortfalls, are specific individuals assigned to address those areas and to uh come up with some sort of a resolution.
I believe under each of the items, if you look at the, the functional maps themselves, they identify individuals by title, not by name.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Handy.
Hi, um, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to say I am, I was really happy to see this. Um, I think um, this is an incredible piece that you've done, much, much needed. And, and some of the reasons that I, I feel that way is that there are so many crossovers of people. I, I guess for an example, I would say staying in their lane where they're not intentionally or not, they are in the wrong lane because they believe that that functionality fell under them. And they actually may not have been equipped to handle that in, in the capacity that, that it should be. And this at least lets you know where, where the responsibilities lie, where the expertise for those areas are as well. So I think that's really great. Um, one of the things that I was looking at, I didn't even look at the technology one. Um, that, I mean, that is such a, a, a big piece that we have to, to tackle. But I was looking at um some of the DGS functions and just thinking of some of the comments I'd heard earlier um from people, whereas um things that were happening on the individual campuses, but they weren't quite sure who, who was responsible for them. But they weren't quite sure who the who was responsible for them. And um, who who was responsible for the maintenance. It's like, um, you have now custodial. At the um, at the campuses where it used to be under DGS, but in reality. Health, the the DGS is responsible for health and safety. So for that to be monitored. Um, it needs to be coming directly from that department. But um. And there was, it was something else I was thinking about on that. But I, oh, hearing the comments about people saying, you know, in the past, but I know in the past. That department wasn't handling it, but right now that department. Is making sure that it's looking at all the facilities and all of those issues. So moving forward. I think it's great to have those things um, specifically where they belong. Um, the notes I made to myself was that um, the the concern is DG- DGS functions need to remain in DGS. Um, and some things happened like last year where who was responsible for um. For long-term facility usage. Ended up saying that it was at the campus, but it wasn't. It was actually a decision that was. Should have been somewhere else and then also came to the trustees. And that decision ended up costing us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and needed revenues to support the field. That um, at one of those campuses. And if we'd had this clear delineation. That wouldn't have happened. But what what challenges when people come and go, you have turnover in leadership. Um, people are not quite sure and they end up sometimes assuming roles and functions that weren't even their responsibility. Um, they think they are, they told that they are, and they're not. So. Having this will really make it clear for everyone so that. You don't have the gaps where things are not getting done because someone thinks it's someone else's job, but also. You will have the person in charge of their areas. To have actually, you know, the oversight and to know that in when it's all said and done. I need to make sure that the campuses' health and safety is clean or this is done or this is done. So I I really commend you guys on getting this done and um. Even though as a first draft, it's a pretty incredible piece that has been much needed. So thanks so much for this.
Thank you, Trustee Handy, Trustee Bonilla, and then Vice President Gonzalez, you win.
Um, yes, so um. What an amazing evening of um, presentations and information brought forward. Um, by uh, this executive team. You all are doing, uh, you know. I talk, always talk about the hard work that you're doing and this is uh, just a physical example of. Thought partnership, um, collaboration, um, and execution, I think of. Of very intentional deliberation about what's working and what's not. Um, and then identifying where those, all those pieces should be. I I love this. I'm a map geek. Uh, because I'm a very visual person and um, unfortunately, I spent a lot of time like just reading through this today. Uh, because it was really, it really allowed me, um, I think in Trustee Handy articulated it well. Uh, where where folks believe um, certain functions belong in the district. And then it gives you an opportunity to talk about whether that's true or not, right? And how to, how to course correct. Um, so what a probably painful, but very um. How do I want to say that? Um, a very uh, reassuring way to like have conversation. Identify things that are deficits and not feel punitive, right? No one's gonna, this is not a, I got you. No one's trying to beat down someone else for saying something wrong for, it's a process and a collaborative process. That I think is just very useful. And so I commend everyone who um, is taking part in this. And I think the other thing that's exciting, it's a living document, right? It 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 stays alive, it gets updated, it's assessed and reassessed. Um, and it was very, very um, informative for me to go through this. So thank you again for. Um, everyone who contributed and will continue to contribute um, on this. Great job.
Yes, yes, Vice President Gonzalez, you win.
Thank you. Um, ditto on the, on the ac- accolades on the map. And I'm gathering that as a first draft, there are probably a lot of iterations to come. Here, here's part of what I'm thinking as I look at the map. Administrative turnover is actually, it's just a fact of life in the community colleges. And so we've been identified. The administrator on the administrative side who's kind of. Ultimately responsible for that component of it. But underneath this map is a ton of other work, obviously. And so the holders of information in any one of these areas. Might not be identified on this map yet. In fact, certainly aren't identified yet. There's some areas in this map that probably if we were to look and if, imagine you're, you're somebody who's new to the campus. Or even old to the campus, but you've got a concern and you say, okay, well, who is it that's in charge of this area? How do I access change in this area? And you look. If that functional map laid out, all right, so here's the ten plus one authority. Here are the committees, here are the roles within those committees, and here's the staff functions that make up. The components of that area of function. That would make this map so much more powerful. And it would also in some ways help any new administrator coming in to an area, adopting a role. To look and say immediately, oh, here's my team. And it's probably then a much more accurate way of understanding how stuff actually gets done. If then that map gets shared out with that area, people can validate it and go, yeah, no, that's not actually how it's being done. No, that committee is actually really working on that. And I note, for example, in the area of curriculum, you know, curriculum is clearly a ten plus one academic senate function. It lies primarily within the domain of of the faculty members. Um. Not having that on the map then leaves out some really critical things. That any administrator would need to understand coming in or anybody looking on the outside. So. One, I think this is a great tool and to make it even more powerful, I think, having filled out. And it probably wouldn't be that hard to do if you hand it to. The people who are doing the work in those areas to then finish drawing it out. Doesn't have to be the one person on the top trying to draw it all out. Anyway, so thank you for nice illustration. Um, I look forward to future iterations.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez, you win. Do we have any more trustees? Uh, Trustee Handy, is that a latent hand? Then I have a comment too as well. You don't make my comment the last comment. Student Trustee Cooper.
Hey there. Um, I just wanted to um, follow up on the ra- last uh. Round of uh, comments and ask uh, Trustee Ewan and the rest of the board to please stop misgendering me. It's right there after my name. This was twenty-three minutes ago. Uh. Thank you, Student Trustee Cooper. Okay, so let me, I I just, I am, I'm so happy. This stuff makes me incredibly happy. Um, and I think the other thing that's really wonderful about this and both incredibly surprising is you all have been so busy. But you are doing, or you have been doing work that is going to make this district and the colleges. So much more effective and so much better for our students and our staff and our faculty. I am just so excited about what these colleges are gonna look like going forward. So here, you know, I have a, of course, I have a few comments and then um, a few questions that don't need to be answered now. If you have answers for them, great. If you don't, no big deal. Um, I have to say, it is definitely one thing. For a document to be able to delineate rule, roles between the college and the district, that's already a good document. It's another thing to say that there is a problem, which many documents have in the past. But it's a significantly very different conversation and a different level of analysis. When you are naming, as you do in this document, the specific gaps, the specific issues. That are causing those problems. I think that that's why this document makes me so happy. The very problems that are big and small are brought out in my mind. As a beginning map for structural solution and remediation. Um, and to use Dr. Brown's term once again, it is profound. I mean, it really is profound. So here are the three questions. And again, these do not need to be answered, but they're just thought questions that. Uh, we can come back to at a certain point when we see the next phase of this document as we go forward. Um. What, what is curious to me and it was, it was stated in in public comment too as well. But it's been, again, a nagging question, I think, for many of us, is how does this fit into the larger conversation of centralization? Decentralization would be number one. Number two. Um, the assumption between the district and the college roles is that the district leads coordinate with the leads at the college. In each category. Um, and for me, that just becomes, is that a correct assumption for for me as a reader to see? And then number three, the gaps, the feedback and the gaps on the right-hand side. Lay out very clearly that we are missing a lot of staff. We are missing, we need a lot of staff. In central and critical areas in order for the issues and gaps to be resolved. Um, and that came out very clearly to me, which of course points to um. A structure for reorganization or uh, uh, along those lines, but also that we do, we will. Need to hire probably individuals in those areas um, to make this. Make these problems be solved or have these problems be solved. So those are my three questions and they could be comments and we can go back to them or not. If and if Chancellor, you have any comments, great. If not, let's leave them as food for thoughts.
I think I'd like to leave them as food for thought. Um, we have been discussing this. Um. In our executive meetings, we got away from it a little bit as we focused on ACCJC in our response. Um, but the functional maps have brought it up again. Um, I have some things that I'd like to present to the board in terms of um, some needs that I've identified. From my conversations with the the different constituency groups. Um, and I I'd like to put it all together and and present it to you. Um, hopefully by December, that that's my goal. Um, but. I I, you bring up some of the same things that we've been talking about, President of Belo Ries. Um, it it's. It's disconcerting, but it's also enlightening in that discussion. Because we're also in the middle of looking at our budget integration model. And how we allocate funds, all of this is, it's like a perfect storm. Um, and in fact, we pushed off um, going forward with some things with the budget allocation model. Um, until we can, everyone, all constituency groups, students, staff. You know, uh, faculty and administrators, uh, rather than just the individuals that are focused on it. I really want to make sure everyone understands what the process is and also have time to provide that input. So. Um, it will probably be coming to you sometime in the spring. Um, but it it's, we still need to work on it. And we're also making some changes in areas that we have. Um, received some, some criticism on in in some areas that need improvement. And we're working with outside agencies to bring in some trainers. Um, to assist us in that because we don't have the subject matter expertise. Um, and we are moving forward with our implementation of our people's law. So a lo- a lot of things happening. The one thing in common is it takes time. So if you would just give us a little bit of time, I think you'll get the answer to all your questions.
Oh, I know. I believe it, I believe it. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and thank you all, presidents and and all that have played a part in this. Um, Student Trustee Cooper.
Hello Chancellor Jackson, I was uh, excited to hear. Um, that uh, concerns and criticisms are being responded to. Uh, by bringing in uh, trainings. That is, that is exactly the kind of thing I love to hear. Could, is it, uh, at this time, are you able to share us with us a little more about what some of those trainings might be focused on?
I think that since we are, we we are probably closing this agenda item, let's move on to the next item.
Well, I I can just speak briefly. Um, Student Trustee Cooper. We're looking at training for faculty, expanded training for faculty. We already have professional development, but looking at expanding that. We're looking at creating. Uh, formalized training for our classified professionals. That's the input. That I've gotten from the um, district classified senate members. Um, Terrence is the president of that. And then we're also looking at onboarding. So. It it's a combination. It's a big umbrella. And we're also talking about student. Um, training in and bringing that under the umbrella. So really. Um, a kind of a teaching and learning center um, is a concept that we're looking at.
Awesome. Thank you, Chancellor Jackson. That's exciting. I can't wait to learn.
Thank you all. Let us move on to the consent calendar. I think that's where we are. Okay, the consent calendar.
Motion to move.
Thank you, Trustee Bonilla. Second, please. Thank you, just uh, Vice President Gonzalez, you and roll call.
Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper? Student Trustee Cooper, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I thought I bumped the mute, but uh, yes, yes, sorry.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Poke?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellorice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to action items. Um, action item ten point one, consider adoption of resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-one. For District Brown Act covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per California Government Code. Section five four nine five three for Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Resolution number twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
I agree, there's some discussion, Madam President.
I want to use discussion.
I was just gonna ask if um, our legal counsel, Natasha Sagi could kind of give an overview of why this came about. And a little bit of the history about it, Natasha. And then we can ask any questions, but she may cover it in her presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, trustees. Um, eighty-three sixty-one is legislation, emergency legislation signed by the governor. To allow public agencies to continue to meet in a virtual setting as we are doing now. Under the legislation, there are two options that um, legislative bodies are provided in terms of how you can continue to meet. One um, is if there are findings made of imminent health risks. Um, the second is if there is recommendations by a local um, official around social distancing. The resolution that you have before you tonight is one based on social distancing. Um, we have um. We have uh, local officials as well as uh, CDC guidance around recommendations for social distancing where possible. Um, under this option, the board is allowed, or any legislative body is allowed to first conduct a meeting. And within thirty days of that meeting, adopt such this resolution, making findings, acknowledging the continued emergency status. That is, that the district and the state continue to be under, as well as the recommendations around social distancing. And our resolution does that. The other thing that this resolution does is it identifies that we have multiple legislative bodies. That work on district business. So the intent of this resolution is for it to be adopted, not only for the governing board. Boards meetings, but for all of the board meetings and all of the meetings within the district that are required to follow the Brown Act. Um, this, there is a a few requirements that come with this, being able to use this exception in the Brown Act. Uh, one is that we must allow for a reasonable public comment period. And that members of the public must be allowed to be made, must be allowed to make public comment live. As opposed to some agencies that required pre-submission. as opposed to some agencies that required pre-submission of their actual public comment. Peralta never did that, so that's not a big change for us at all. Um, we've always allowed live public comment, um and so we will continue to do that practice. Um, the other requirement that's important for for this legislative body and all of the legislative bodies that work in the district under the Brown Act is that if for any reason our technology pauses, our technology fails us for a moment, it is critical that we stop the meeting. The public must be able to attend and monitor and be part of our meetings for the meeting to continue. So if Zoom was to go down, we would be required to stop the meeting, and then we can resume our meeting when Zoom goes back up and when members of the public can rejoin. Um, and those are kind of, those are two of the primary um uh requirements under AB 361 exemption that are very important to note. Um, there's a few other details within this section of the Brown Act. Um, but we are, we are in compliance with all of those, all of those exceptions. Um, so the, I guess the last one that's important to mention is that every 30 days the board will be required to review this and reconsider whether you want to continue to meet virtually or not. And so you will continue to see a resolution like this on an agenda every 30 days after this one. And it will, it will move from our action items to our consent items once it becomes uh something that we're doing in the regular course, even though it's only for a some shorter period of time. The exceptions here do end in January 2024. Um, and conversation with the Chancellor, I don't anticipate you'll be using it quite that long, but you'll be able to review it every 30 days as you continue to manage um the pandemic and the health and safety of everyone in the Peralta community. Thanks.
Thank you, Natasha. We have a couple of comments. Trustee Jenkins, I believe that's all for now.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, trustee Jenkins. Did you still have a question?
Absolutely. I just want to go on record that I'm going to know on this item. I expect it to pass, but we as the board are the leaders of this district. And at a time that we're asking our students, our staff, our faculties to go back, I believe that this item presents a fundamental fairness issue. Um, there's a number of boards, uh even country casa that are meeting in person. And so I expect this item to pass, but I hope that we can work on a hybrid model in which um the board can return in some type of way to ensure uh an equitable resolution.
I was just going to say, um, trustee Jenkins, it has always been, um, and I I can speak for myself. I can't speak for all of the board members, but I think the consensus was that we were doing the same as we're asking our staff, which is that we're coming back. This is a soft launch. We evaluate it every month, um, as was indicated. And so that, this is not like we're, we're, we aren't leading by example. I would just say that. Um, but I think right now, given the the situation and also with exemptions, um, I've always, people ask about exemptions. Um, we may have some board members that do have exemptions, uh or members of our staff that have exemptions that we cannot compel them to meet face to face. So um, that was the other reason that we wanted to make sure that we vetted this, that everyone was able to update information. Um, and that information is confidential and does not need to be disclosed, but it it also guides us as we move forward. So um, this is, this is not a permanent, this is uh every 30 days, we look at it and review it. And um, as you said, we may move to a hybrid as we go through this soft launch and gradually get back to full face to face. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Chancellor. Student trustee Cooper and then student trustee Hogan?
Hey, everyone. Um, so on this matter, uh, you know, I I think, I think obviously, you know, I'm going to uh advocate and use my advisory vote to encourage that we do pass this. But I actually wanted to speak um in reciprocation of Kevin Jenkins, uh, or excuse me, my apologies, trustee Jenkins' uh exact points and echo that in solidarity with uh public comments from previous meetings. Um, I I do understand the outrage of faculty, of classified staff, of students who feel that there is a double standard in play. Um, uh, in us being able to continue serving these roles from the safety of our homes, while many of them are being uh pushed uh back into classrooms or spaces that some of them are not yet comfortable with. Um, I feel that we still need to move forward with this, but I feel like it calls to a a question to 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 where we are with addressing the double standards that have been pointed out about this. And I would really like to see us move towards the uh hybrid model uh that trustee Jenkins uh suggested. I would be elated if uh the board would take a recommendation to amend uh this item to pass the uh the to pass it, but to uh put it right in the agenda item that we have here, that we will strive towards uh hybrid meetings.
Thank you. Student trustee Hogan, you had your hand up earlier. I'm not sure if you still have comments.
Um, no, my question was about the the um, the hybrid. Um, and Dr. Jack, that Jackson did answer my question already. I put that in the chat. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Gonzalez, UN?
Thank you. Um, I think one of the things that I, that I like about trustee Jenkins' proposal around hybrid is the acknowledgement that this form of format actually in some ways is more equitable. Um, I think just as we've looked at the extension of online education as opening uh options for people to take classes in ways that they couldn't before because of transportation needs, scheduling needs, et cetera. Uh, moving our meetings online um has opened up the possibility of people attending remotely and participating remotely. And so while I am conscious of the kind of the questions of equity, questions of fairness and safety and and like that, I hope that as we explore how and when we return to face-to-face meetings, that we won't throw the baby out with the bathwater, that we'll actually be able to retain the best elements of online meeting and allow public participation using the technology that we've developed in this very unfortunate pandemic. Um, so I all noted, I think that everybody's making important points. Um, and let's move to a vote. Thanks.
I see no other comments. Let us vote.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
No.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Poke?
Abstention.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, UN?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You didn't trust you Hogan?
Oh, I did. It was, she voted yes originally when we found out there was hands raised. I can go, I can ask her again if you'd like. Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to 10.2, consider adoption of resolution number 21 slash 22 dash 55 for suspending administrative procedure 7213 per California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office Executive Order 2020 dash 04. Can I have a motion for that?
Madam President, I'd like to move this one as well as the next item and just bundle them 10.2 and 10.3, which is the Chancellor's contract extension.
I'll second that.
So, discussion?
I, I would oppose the uh bundling them. I I don't think that we need to trim down time that badly that we can't address them individually.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? All right, let's vote.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Poke?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you went?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve both 10.2 and 10.3.
Thank you. Let's go to 10.4, consider ratification of the MOU between PCCD on behalf of Laney and OUSD for the operation of the Gateway to College Program during fiscal years 21, 22, and 22, 23. May I have a motion?
A move.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Second? Second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Student trustee Cooper?
I apologize. I've just gotten a little lost in my agenda. Which which number are we on?
10.4. Is that correct?
Thank you. Thank you for the help. My apologies.
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Poke?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you went? I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now at 10.5, consider ratification of amendment number two to the consulting and training services contract with knowledge saves lives in the amount of $85,000 to continue to serve as the district's director of public safety and continue to support the district's Department of General Services and community-based safety program. Motion.
So move.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla. Second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Discussion? Student trustee Cooper?
Hello. Um, I was just wondering if anyone could very briefly tell me a little bit more about this item that I might not have contextually understood beyond what's written in the agenda item or or connected with it here. Um, I I I just don't fully understand uh what what what's being provided to us through the service.
Okay, through the Chancellor?
I would ask that um IVC Smith um address this item.
Sure. Thank you, trustee, and thank you, Chancellor Jackson. Um, uh, knowledge saves lives has been assisting since we created um, or we've looked to create a new uh security base, uh community-based security. We are looking to hire our own director of public safety. Um, and because we did not have that person identified immediately um in our transition, uh, knowledge saves lives has assisted us ever since, uh, I would say, um, March, um, May of last year, as we transitioned through this period. And we're asking now that the public safety director will be coming on to onboard that person and to continue to assist us as he um helps get acclimated into his new role and also through the new year. So uh, I hope that gives you a little bit more information.
Thanks so much. Very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, roll. Um, Vice President Gonzalez, you went?
And do we have a timeline? Where are we in the process of um hiring the the permanent position here?
Um, uh, trustee you and I would, uh, let's see, HR have gotten information that the individual has accepted the offer. So we are looking to bring him on board.
All right. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. That was, that was an answer I was not expecting, but I'm really happy with.
I'm sorry. I think my internet went down.
I think President Reese, we can proceed to a vote.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Poke?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you went?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We are now on 10.6. Consider ratification of agreement for professional services with DWK in the amount of $895,360 for the provision of legal advice and counsel to the Department of General Services for matters related to facilities, maintenance and operations, capital projects, procurement for construction, and non-construction-related matters as requested. May I have a motion?
A move.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Discussion, please.
I do have a question. Let me see. Okay, um, just one second. I'm I'm looking, um. This is 10.7. No.
10.6.
10.6. Okay, there. Uh, for some reason, my comment disappeared from my section. So my question on this, on this one is that now that we're going to have them, um, we're going to have them working um for the DGS and on capital projects. Will this eliminate, um, will they be the first? Or is there still going to be two people who are reviewing these contracts? Because my concern has been that we're paying one, but then we have another law firm that is going over their work, which is pretty much double dipping, I believe. And so my question is now, are these going to be our primary people who are handling the DGS and the contracts and everything else that's involved with that? Are we still going to have secondary?
Through the Chancellor?
It just seemed redundant to me.
Let me, first of all, thank you, um, trustee Handy. We are a we because it's a collective we. We are trying to get our arms around our legal expenses. And we also made some, I think, tremendous strides in streamlining a very cumbersome process. Um, our CTS program, which is our contract tracking system, um, was added as an adjunct to our people's law. So it does not integrate. And because it is a standalone, because we wanted to be able to provide um visibility for contracts, um, all contracts in the district, and and some don't require board approval because they're under the threshold. Um, that system was created, and it was good for what it was created for. But we have contracts that come under that system and are reviewed just as a normal uh ongoing process by our uh attorneys that are, um, our panel of attorneys, depending on their expertise. Separate from that, we have had DGS have their own legal advisors to help create documents to go to the board for construction, specifically because they have that subject matter expertise. And sometimes there is an overlapping of that, but we have been working to eliminate that. So it isn't getting double looked at. It's a matter of cooperation to say, do you have this? Or if you don't have this, then I will take care of this. And I think that has been working out well. Um, we still need to fine tune it some more. Um, but with the extension of my contract, that will be one of those. But with the extension of my contract, that will be one of those things that I will be able to bring back to the board in the future and show you that we have reduced some of our legal costs.
That would be great, because it's also cumbersome. It delays the process, because you have so many checks and balances, and any redundancy just slows down the process. But this, this is not a, this is not a minimum wage job. This is a very expensive look at these contracts. So I'm hoping that we can get those things under control.
And, and I don't know.
Wait, Dr. Jackson, I'm sure you can get those things under control. Thank you.
Working with staff. And I know that IVC Smith and I have had discussions specifically on these areas.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Handy.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow? Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's go to ten point seven. Consider adoption of resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-three, ratifying six independent consultant agreements for non-construction services with Ray and Associates Cleaning Systems for the provision of deep cleaning services for the district-wide return-to-campus custodial and deep cleaning projects, declaring futility of soliciting additional bids for supplemental services, and approving omnibus amendment thereto for a commensurate increase in compensation. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Jenkins. Discussion?
If I could, I would, I've talked to IVC Smith about this, and you've also heard the president give their presentation regarding the use of her three funds and the deep cleaning. But I'd like for IVC Smith just to speak to this a little bit, just in case there are some questions and people may not know how to pose those questions. So IVC Smith, if you could do that.
Sure. Let me give you a little bit more background. Initially, we put out an RFP. We asked the colleges to please give us a list of spaces that they anticipated on using. Those, that list was put into the RFP. We had a walkthrough. We had maybe six to seven participants in the walkthrough for the RFP. We also broke it down into six individual packages so that we could have participation on various vendors. So it was written in the RFP, you may not be awarded all packages. You may be awarded one package depending upon what your bid was. When we received the bids, it was only two bids. We even extended to ensure and answer more questions. So we extended the bid and we received two packages. Ray and Associates were the lowest bidder. When we began cleaning, there were other, there were many areas that was added to their, their scope. So Ray and Associates was able to sanitize and meet our deadline by addressing all the additional areas. In some areas, I mean, there were people, there were staff in those areas. So we had to work with staff and ensure their safety and make sure that we clean, we sanitized and cleaned the areas that they were in. So Ray and Associates worked with us. This is a reflection of the added square footage that, again, we were trying to get ahead of ourselves and put the RFP out. We've got two bids, and more areas were added because services, more areas were opened up for the fall. And that is where we're here for the approval of this resolution.
Thank you, IVC Smith. Hopefully that addresses any questions and also provides some historical viewpoint for our student trustees.
Okay. Seeing no questions. Thank you for that. Let us do roll.
Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That leads us to board reports. Board of Trustees' report?
President Reese, I have a question. I was waiting earlier to hear. I didn't hear us pass the consent calendar. I had a question. I know I may not be able to get the answer, but I did want to ask a question about the advertising. I think it pertains to all of our campuses.
May I entertain that question legal?
It was seven point one.
Natasha?
The item is already passed, so we wouldn't be able to engage in any discussion. But as a courtesy to the trustee, you could receive the question, and the chancellor could provide the trustee with information after, after the fact.
After the fact, meaning after?
Meaning after the meeting, after the meeting. If the chancellor, if the trustee needs information about that.
Yes, that, I believe that item was being forwarded by Laney College and President Besikov. So he and I will draft something, or if you can send me your specific question, trustee.
Well, it's actually, it's a question that I want the whole board to hear, because I think it was really important. There was actually two questions on that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I was waiting. I had my notes. I didn't hear that being passed. And then I started writing Natasha earlier to try to see if we could get back to that.
Well, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, you know that, and this is public information, I don't mind sharing this, is that we try to capture any questions that the board has and either send it out in a one-way communication to the entire board, and we can do that, and it's outside of the board meeting, but everybody gets to see it, and I always caution, please do not respond, so we don't, we aren't in violation. So it's, it's really a request for information, which anyone can ask for. We have RFIs all the time.
This isn't really, this is a procedural question, basically.
So in terms of process, just so I'm understanding, Natasha, trustee Handy can actually ask her question right now, right? But we wouldn't, the chancellor would need to respond to that outside of the meeting. Is that correct? Natasha?
Yes, yes, President Reese. That, that, it just, it, we shouldn't take up items that have already passed. They are done. And so we need, the board needs to move on from those. But just as a one-time exception, as a common courtesy to trustee Handy, it would be fine to take the question and bring back the answer.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Handy.
Okay. So President Besikov, I was glad to see that you're taking a proactive stance towards the low enrollment and advertisement. But the challenge that came up for me in that is that it's thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, which is a lot. But in, in the past, we would do that as Peralta colleges and list all four. Whereas, I know this is coming, this is an extension of something that's already happening on your campus, but to spend thirty-five thousand dollars and for, it'll advertise for Laney College, where the same stations would just as well say the Peralta colleges and then list them individually. So I just wanted that to be considered, because we don't have that much of a budget in our, in our outside departments for advertising. So that was my question. And you wouldn't know past practices normally, because this is the way that we used to do it some time ago. So that was just something I just wanted to bring up to the attention as a, as a cost saver, but that would also support all four campuses. That was it.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Now let us go on to the board reports. And just a reminder to all of our board trustees, that this specific agenda item, eleven point one, is for specific events that you engaged in in the past two weeks as a trustee. It is not an agenda for anything else. And as a chair, I will, if need be, redirect individual. Okay, let's go on to our reports. Trustee Handy? If you are.
I just realized, yeah, my speaker's still on. Well, two weeks ago, we had the pleasure of attending the American Association of Community College Trustees, which is a national trustee board, and is one of our first conferences in person. And being a delegate, trustee Withrow and myself were delegates, were able to help to support the election of California Pacific Region trustees at the national level, which I think is so important. There are many colleges across the country, and trustees are not necessarily elected, they're appointed, which is a whole different thing, because they serve at the will of the governor. So a lot of the things that happened that support colleges in small areas across the country started in California. So we think it's really important that California step up to the plate and take some of these positions on the national board. And we're really excited to see people do that. I served on the nominating committee myself for two years, but I came off last year. And tomorrow, we'll be leaving for a, back to San Diego again for the California Black Educators Conference, which is jam-packed and very intense. And we do in two days what we normally would do in about four. So I'm excited about having those opportunities and also to get out and see new ideas of what people are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
I'd like to follow up and segue from what trustee Handy talked about. I also attended the ACCG conference. And a lot went on in a four-day period, a lot of workshops and whatever, but we had, on Wednesday, a four-hour seminar with about two hundred and fifty trustees from around the country that actively debated the methods for enhanced board governance and leadership, if you will. And as trustee Handy pointed out, you have a lot of trustees that are elected, and you have a lot of trustees that are appointed by a governor. They have a different focus. Community-oriented, if you will, but they get just as emotional as the ones in the state of California. Throughout the conference, I would say, of the workshops, and there's a workshop every hour throughout the day. A lot of focus on enrollment throughout the country. So we're not, we're not the only ones that are having enrollment issue. They're having the same problems in North Carolina that we have, same problems in North Dakota that we're having.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Let's go to the student trustee Cooper.
Hello, friends. Got a small, quick handful of items to report from my past two weeks. First of all, I'm really excited to report that I've been collaborating with the Laney Queers and the Lavender Project on a costume party that is being thrown tomorrow at Laney College from three to five. Super excited. I hope we'll have some of our district and college leadership come show some loving support and put on your coolest costume. Two, I, or excuse me, yeah, two, I'm in the early stages of drafting a pair of resolutions. More to come on that. Three, I connected with a student this week who had a very relevant story for us and welcomed me to share that, share it with them by name. Aurora Valarmino is a third semester student enrolled in the College of Alameda ADAM program, their fashion program. She enrolled in the fall of two thousand and twenty twenty as a resident of the Bay Area, but due to the growing financial impacts of the pandemic, she has since moved to Mexico's more affordable housing for the time. If the program returns to campus, Aurora will be able to attend, as she has reported, many other students in her, in her program, you know, will suffer the same. So, so she's calling for some, some look into the flexibility of these programs. Three, I connected with another student last week who seemed terrified to share her story and asked me to keep the, her personal details anonymous. I'll just keep it brief and say that I've heard some of the most brutal claims of harm and retaliation from this student, specifically under the focus of discrimination and violence against black women. And she has asked me to speak to people within the district about how we can bring support to this, this issue, so that people can feel forward about coming forward about such serious incidences. So I hope to follow up with somebody about that. I just don't know who would respond to me in the district. And then I was especially moved today, when, at first, I was heartbroken when a migrant trans student reached out into the community network and got ahold of, you know, several individuals, including myself, in a chain of communications, talking about the extreme financial and housing insecurity that the pandemic has brought about for them and that is impacting their ability to continue their education. I have never in my life before seen so many people come so rapidly to connect a student with resources to address the issues that they are challenged by. I saw the Lavender Project start reaching out into every network that they could figure out as to how to support this, other professionals of Laney College. And if you don't mind me spotlighting you, President Besikov, I was deeply moved by your rapid response to this urgent message. I, I am not shy to say, I literally was, was in a little bit of tears at the end of that interaction and felt so much safer myself if I was to ever experience an emergency, that I at least can reach out, somebody will care. So thank you, Laney community, for your incredible dedication that I've seen to students in my work this week. Lastly, in conclusion, I've been reaching out to the board to request significant discussion, and I'm still pursuing significant, sufficient discussion about misgendering, deadnaming, and other harmful language on the board. After failure to respond to these requests, I've shifted to demanding public apologies for that discriminatory language repeatedly and persistently used upon myself. And in regards to the disabled students of Peralta, I really do hope someone will follow back up with me on those messages soon. And that's what I've been working on this week. Thanks so much for everyone's time and attention.
Thank you, student trustee Cooper. Let's move on to student trustee Hogan.
I haven't.
Okay, I think I, I think I heard the part of the sentence that was necessary. All right, let's go on to trustee, who's my next tile here? Trustee Jenkins?
Okay, so I want to say happy birthday to student trustee Cooper, who had a birthday that passed. Happy birthday. I want to second what trustee Handy and trustee Withrow said. The conference was wonderful. It was great being a first-time trustee, getting their net.
Um, the conference was wonderful, it was great being a first-time trustee, getting there, networking with trustees across the country and hearing about different issues that trustees and um community colleges are going through. It was wonderful seeing my colleagues in person. Um, and then just an update, yesterday's golf tournament, the Dr. Bill Riley um swing for success was postponed. I'm on the host committee. Um, but because of major flooding at the golf course, there was over a hundred and twenty people uh players scheduled to play, and we've raised over a hundred thousand dollars for students already. So the foundation is in the process of looking at rescheduling for early December. So if you haven't um got your foursomes in there, make, and you're a golfer, make sure that you uh sk- make sure that you register for the golf tournament. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Um, yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, I want to echo my colleagues. Um, I also joined them down at the ACCT conference in San Diego. It was really great to meet some of my colleagues in person, um, which hasn't happened yet. Um, and so um I got a lot out of the seminars. Um, I also attended the Effective Board Governance um seminar um with trustee Whitrow and trustee Jenkins. Um, it was really great to be a first-time trustee and to get kind of best practices of other districts. As well as mingling with other trustees from around the country, um, and seeing what people's challenges are, how they mirror ours and I'm trying to get some good ideas to bring back here to Peralta. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Delphine Polk. Let's go to trustee Bonia.
I'm sorry, I have to pass. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Thank you. Um, I had the delightful privilege of uh having lunch in person with um President Angelica Garcia. First time I'd met actually in person, um, because she was hired during this pandemic and as um as an elected coming out of the city of Berkeley, I've always met with presidents. Um, and so thank you, Dr. uh Jackson, for arranging that. And uh, Dr. Garcia, it was uh nice hearing about your um protests at Saint Mary's camping out on the lawn of their on their manicured lawn, giving them hell in your student days. It's nice to meet you in person. And uh also, you know, a lot of what we do as a district these days is digital. And I just want to um, point out, we have a fabulous um student newspaper, the Peralta Citizen, that covers us every, every meeting and does so quite well. I want to encourage people to uh go check it out. And you can continue to participate in the online life of uh Peralta uh vicariously through the Citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gonzalez, you win. Um, I would just share that I also attended the ACCT conference with my fellow trustees. And I have to say, it was my very first ACCT conference. Um, and it was themed specifically on diversity, equity and inclusion. What was most interesting to me, um, and actually quite powerful, is that we in California seem to be far ahead of educational institutions across the country. And I know that we as Californians always see ourselves as progressive, um, and we kind of believe that to be so. But it was interesting to have it evidenced um so concretely at ACCT. And and my, my one favorite um conference there was actually from uh San Diego Community College District. And there was, they were talking about entrepreneurship and the way that they had built it out within the district and particularly the four actually, I don't know how many colleges they have, several colleges. Um, but there was one statement that the chancellor there, who is no longer the legendary um chancellor Constance Carroll, but a, a, a new chancellor there. And he had, he had, um, and I'm going to maybe kind of paraphrase a little incorrectly, uh, this quotation. But he had started out the presentation by saying that often colleges teach courses dependent on the communities they serve. And his point being that um, that entrepreneurship sometimes isn't, and entrepreneurship classes sometimes are not encouraged or taught in institutions um where the demographics uh might be uh of a different socioeconomic status. And he said, this is, we have to stop doing that. We have to ensure that we are giving all of our students across the state, across the nation, regardless of their socioeconomic status, the same opportunities, the same knowledge, the same kind of um inspiration that other colleges um are giving to their students in other areas. So I thought it was an interesting quotation and it was incredibly interesting and inspiring um presentation. So that shows yet once again how, how much we can learn from these conferences that we attend. And that's, that's what I have to share. I will move on to announcements and I'll hand it over to you, Vice President Gonzalez, you win.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I'd like to echo trustee Cooper's announcement that the Laney College Lavender Project is inviting all of us to join in for the Laney Queers Fall Costume Tea Party, October twenty seventh from three to five at the Laney College Bistro. The event is for LGBTQ plus students and their allies from all four colleges. And I've pasted in the URL where you can RSVP at tinyurl.com forward slash Laneyqueers. Um, I've got two other announcements here. The district-wide virtual transfer day is coming up this coming Thursday, the twenty eighth. I guess that's next week, from ten to one. And that event is, actually, I guess that's this week. My days are just flying past me. Um, the events for students at all four colleges are planning to transfer to a four-year school. And we have over forty colleges and universities participating and providing students with guidance, information, support in pursuit of transfer to a four-year college or university. If you're interested or you know somebody who's interested, please have them contact the student services team at one of our four campuses for more information. And then the next board meeting will be on Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one. And uh so we'll see you online again. And that's all the announcements I have.
Fantastic. Thank you, Vice President Gonzalez, you win. Just want to say two things, and I'm sorry I didn't say this earlier. Um, thank you to everybody in the district for the incredible and relentless work that allowed for an incredible ACCJC visit. Um, and I'm sorry for not saying that earlier on. And then my second uh last announcement before I bid you all good night is uh welcome home. Uh, Chancellor Jackson, we're, you're with us until twenty twenty-three. And we're excited about that. All right, goodbye, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.